Evening and welcome to the August 19th meeting of Glendale City Council. May we have roll call, please? Council members Devine.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Sonanian. Here. Today's flag salute will be led by Councilmember Najarian.
Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation, which will be delivered by Chaplain Al Garcelazzo of Glendale Adventist Medical Center.
Let us pray. Dear God, we are grateful for the civil and religious liberties that we enjoy, liberties that allow us to conduct this city council meeting and to offer this invocation to you. As we look at the world around us, it's obvious that there are divisions and conflicts and social unrest. I especially think of the situation in Ferguson, Missouri, as well as the many conflicts in the Middle East. I pray that somehow you will intervene so that peace and calm and justice will prevail. Now be with us here tonight. Bless us and guide us. In your name we pray. Amen.
Comment? Thank you. And may we have the report, please?
The agenda for the August 19, 2014, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is postponed on Thursday, August 14, 2014, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
What's next?
Under presentation and appointments, at 3A is a proclamation designating August 22nd, 2014, as 100,000 Homes Campaign Day.
And we have a representative from the Senate? Yes, we do. Come on. Good evening.
Good evening. I want to thank you very much for this proclamation. I don't know if you're going to be reading it, so I prepared some remarks thinking that it would be read, so.
Please, I do intend to read them into record.
You do? Okay. Well, for those who do not know what the 100,000 Homes Campaign is, it was a national campaign launched in 2010 to house 100,000 chronically homeless adults from across the country. It involved identifying our neighbors who were living on the streets, by doing so at 4:00 in the morning. Glendale participated in this in May 2011, and we had a collection of wonderful support from the community. The city was a huge partner in leading this effort, which your proclamation will detail. What I do want to say is that we housed in Glendale 68 chronically homeless adults in that period of time, when our goal was 10. Of those 68, 34 are veterans. We also, at that time, set a goal to end veteran homelessness in Glendale. And I am very happy to say that we have identified the last four homeless veterans in Glendale. All four are in line for housing, and we can then say, functionally, we have ended veteran homelessness in Glendale. So again, I want to thank the city of Glendale, the Management Association of Glendale, which was a great supporter, and the other sponsors who are noted in the proclamation. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, and thanks to Asensio for spearheading this very important goal.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention the event on Friday, and I'm hoping that all of you can come. Supervisor Antonovich will be here. It'll be at 10:30 here in these chambers this Friday, August 22nd. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And I'll read the proclamation. Whereas Glendale joined the National 100,000 Homes Campaign in 2011, adopting a housing-first approach to ending homelessness, which discourages imposing conditions related to health, employment, or sobriety on permanent housing, and for its part pledged to find housing for 11 chronically homeless persons in the community by 2014, July 2014. And whereas Asensio leads Glendale's participation in the 100,000 Homes Campaign with support from Glendale Community Services and Parks, the Glendale Police Department, First Baptist Church of Glendale, Glendale Adventist Medical Center, Glendale Management Association, First United Methodist Church of Glendale, and many volunteers who conducted a week-long canvassing effort to find, survey, and identify homeless persons in Glendale. And whereas Glendale met its two-year goal within the first five months of joining the campaign, and exceeded expectations by providing permanent supportive housing to 68 chronically homeless people in three years, and decreasing the count of homeless U.S. veterans to just one in the city of Glendale. And whereas Glendale, together with other cities across the nation, helped the 100,000 Homes Campaign reach its four-year goal to house 100,000 chronically homeless Americans one month ahead of schedule, I therefore hereby proclaim the week of August 22nd, 2014, as 100,000 Homes Campaign Day. And I'll ask Councilmember Najarian to present the certificate.
Thank you very much.
What's next?
3B is presentation of the 2014 Rosie Award recipients.
Great. And we have Michelle Pishai to do a short presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Sonanian and city council members. My name is Michelle Pishai, and I'm the secretary to the city manager and chair of the Rosie Award Committee. I have the honor of presenting to you the Rosie Award recipients for 2014. The Rosie Award is the highest recognition that can be given to a city employee by another city employee for outstanding dedication and commitment to exceptional customer service. The award is named after Rosie Flores Grzowski, a former secretary to the city manager, who suddenly passed in 1991. She left behind a legacy of compassion and superior customer service. I'd like to introduce Rosie's daughter. Her name is Lydia Armenta, and invite her to say just a few words.
I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of the family for continuing to honor my mother by presenting this award. She was very proud to be an employee here with the city, and she dedicated her life to provide excellent service, and so we just do appreciate this continued honor of providing it to other valuable employees. So, thank you.
Thank you. And she must have been a truly wonderful employee for there to be an award named after her. So, thanks to her for the service that she provided to our residents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The Rosie Award Selection Committee is made up of representatives from the following employee groups. It includes the Glendale City Employee, Police Officer, Firefighters, and Management Associations, as well as the Employee Human Relations Committee. I'd like to thank each organization for their time and generous contribution to the award. I'd also like to thank the city employees for their time and effort that goes into the nomination process. We did have nine nominees this year, and I have to tell you, it's a very, very difficult selection process. Our committee had a very difficult time narrowing it down to just two recipients. Allow me to introduce Daniel Ornellas. Danny is a housing advisor in our Community Development Department with 29 years of city service. Stringent guidelines and deadlines set by numerous housing agencies do not stop Danny from the challenge of placing tenants in need. He has gone so far as to correct violations on a unit to pass inspection so the tenant would not be homeless. His empathy and compassion extends to coworkers, where he volunteers his lunch hour, evenings, and even his weekends to help out with a range of requests, from driving to an auto repair shop to pick up a car, to even helping shop on the weekends with big-ticket items. Danny's personal motto, "You get what you give," yes, with which he has humbly served our city. Let me present Mr. Daniel Ornellas.
Thank you, members of the city council. Of course, everybody who's here to see me, Georgia, and all my coworkers over there. Thank you very much. It's an honor and a privilege, and I'm humbled. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, don't go away. Don't go away. Mr. Ornellas, I'm gonna ask Councilmember... Councilmember Devine has the award and a little envelope for you.
Thank you very much.
Xavier is a custody shift supervisor in our police department with 20 years of service. Incarceration is considered one of the lowest points in a person's life. Xavier maintains a positive and professional demeanor toward them and their family. Constituents from various bureaus within the department and our outside agencies will ask for him by name, knowing he will find accurate answers to their questions, even if it means researching logs and databases for it. As his supervisor, he tells his coworkers at least once a day how much their hard work is appreciated by the city and by himself. His contagious smile, stop hiding it, is uplifting to those around him. As a reverend pastor for his church, he has set up a food bank and feeds the homeless at least once a month until he runs out of food, which is great. Known to most as Tiny. Let me present Xavier Atkins.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, Chief of Police, who I am honored that he would come, the commander, the assistant chief, and my administrator, Mr. Juan Lopez, and all the other friends and family that we have here, because I know in Glendale we are family. Thank you. But most of all, I would like to thank Mr. Louis Frosto, who is a gentleman that I worked with, who nominated me for this award, and I am grateful that he would come, and if he could stand so everyone could see him, please, and give him a bow.
Mr. Atkins, please don't go away.
Did you ever think about running for city council? Nobody'd mess around with you.
Thank you, sir.
See him coming.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. This concludes the Rosie Awards for 2014.
Thank you, Ms. Pishai. What's next, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, next item on the agenda are the consent items, including minutes following a routine that may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before motion is proposed. And there was one card submitted, 4F.
Yes, I will pull 4F for separate consideration.
I'll move the remainder of the consent calendar.
Yes, also, we have...
My apologies, sir. I neglected to mention earlier, we would ask if we could pull item B, 4B1, for separate consideration, and we'll give you a brief presentation now or later if you choose, but the balance is ready to go.
Yes, we'll pull 4B1 as well.
I'll move the remainder of the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Do we have a second? Can we have roll call on the balance?
Councilmembers Devine.
Yes.
Friedman. Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Sonanian.
Yes. Let's start with item 4F. Not 4B1. 4B1 is being...
We can either do it later or now. It's your call, sir.
Well, let's start with 4B1 then.
Okay. And certainly if... If I can read it into the record. 4B1, Director of Public Works Regarding Facilities Management Building Maintenance Contracts. B1 is a motion awarding a contract to South Shore Building Services, Inc., for the building and window washing at various city facilities in connection with specification number 3549, in an amount of $529,356.40, or $105,871.28 per year for five years.
Sir, we would ask that we are allowed to enter into a one-year contract on this particular item, as opposed to the five-year contract, that one year being listed there at 105,871.28. We have gone out to bid, we've been dissatisfied with the bid participation in terms of the response to the bids, even though we have a good deal of interest as we do job walks and as we circulate the request for bids. And as we look at evaluating all of our services, we would only ask that, because we still have windows that we need to clean, we do a one-year contract, not a five-year contract, and we'll bring this back to you later on, along with other considerations on streamlining.
And the low bid participation was, how many bidders?
We had one bid, and this is the third time that we've gone out. And as we look at other cities, the bids are generally in line, but we think we need to do something a little bit different in terms of combining the work.
You want it polled?
Well, we'd ask for a one-year contract versus a five-year.
I assume before I called for vote, the South Shore is amenable to a one-year contract?
We have circled back to them, and they are, sir.
Great. Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I'll move 4B1 for one year in the budget.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Devine.
Yes.
Friedman. Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Sonanian.
Yes. Item 4F. Please read that into record, Mr. Clerk.
Item 4F is Director of Community Development Regarding Proposed Neodora Drive Historic District Authorization for Funding to Conduct a Historic Resource Survey. F2 is a motion authorizing city manager to negotiate and execute professional services agreement with Architectural Resources Group, and they're not to exceed $24,850. F2 is a resolution appropriating $24,850 to fund the project.
Yes, sir. Certainly, I would defer to either Mr. Foy or Mr. Platt, but as we have a proposed historic district, it has been our practice to move forward with the survey, and that's what this item really is for. So, if you have any questions, I believe there's one speaker.
Very well. We do have Catherine Yurka would like to speak on this item. How much time do you need, Catherine?
Hi, I'm Catherine Yurka. I am a co-applicant for the district.
Three minutes. Is three minutes enough?
Yes, of course. The author of the application, as well as a board member of the Glendale Historical Society, so this is a two-for-one. On behalf of the Historical Society, I would urge you, please, to approve the funding for the survey. Mainly, though, I just am here in case you have any questions about the district or the application, so I won't take up more of your time, except to say how unique it is, not just in Glendale, but really in Southern California.
Very well. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Weaver.
The area within this proposed historic district was developed long before the remainder of the area surrounding it, and it has a stream through it.
Right, which is why it's so unusual, because of the landscaping around the neighborhood.
Much bigger parcels.
Yeah. Thanks.
So, I'll move the item.
I'll second.
May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmembers Devine.
Yes.
Friedman. Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Sonanian.
Yes. Next, please.
Next item is City Council and Staff Comments, and, Mr. Mayor, I would like to mention that the reason there was no reading of the forecast agenda for next week is because the council will be dark next week.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Does anyone have any comments?
No.
Oh, council comments?
I do.
Yes. Ms. Devine.
Yes. I'd just like to congratulate Parks and Open Spaces for their fabulous Dodger Night. It was a great event. We had over 600 people in attendance, and it was a lot of fun, and I hope next year we can get a lot more Glendaleans there. Unfortunately, the men in blue didn't win, but it was still a fun evening. So, congratulations to them. Sunday, I attended Temple Sinai for the Shafar Choir, and that was my first time hearing this, and it's a ritual whereby they bring in the high holy day. So, I just want to mention that that was a meaningful day for me, as I'd never experienced that before. And today, we were all at the inauguration and the red ribbon cutting of the free little libraries, which are around the city. And there are five of them, and they put them in parks. And what you can do is go to, when you're walking in the parks, if you feel like sitting down and reading, there are library books there, and you can read them, you can take them home and then return them, or replace them with another. So, I hope everybody takes advantage of that and look for them. They are at Cerritos, Fremont, Montrose, Perdigo, and outside City Hall. So, that's going to be a real lovely addition to our parks, and I thank the library system for that. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Najarian.
So, I just want to mention that, reiterate what Mr. Kasakin said, is that next week, the 26th of August, we're going to be dark, and then the 2nd of September, the Tuesday following Labor Day, will be dark. And then I will be gone the meeting of the 9th and the 16th, so you won't see me for about a month. The reason I'll be gone for the 9th and the 16th is that I'm going to be on my honeymoon.
Oh.
So, thank you, thank you.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you. So, if you don't see me here for a while, don't slip any development projects through.
I make no guarantee, sir.
But I just wanted to let that be known.
Thank you, and congratulations, Mr. Najarian. I will also mention that I was at the Temple Sinai on Sunday. What a wonderful event. I had the honor of calling out the first tekeah in, yes, in celebration of the kickoff of the Jewish New Year's season, and had the honor of hearing the shofar, which was, for me also, was a first-time experience. And you'd be amazed at the age range of individuals that showed up with their own horns and did so very well. Also, the Glendale Dodger Night was a resounding success, as my colleague mentioned. I do want to encourage for everyone to participate next year. I think everyone who came was very happy and had a great time. And just as a benefit, let's mention that the money that's generated by the event is for our Parks and Open Space Foundation. So, not only are we having a good time, but we're having a good time with a purpose. So, once again, please, next year, join us. Let's have a good time together and support our parks and open space. That's all I have for today.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
What if you're an Angel fan?
Well, you should be more of a fan of Glendale than you are of Angels.
Look, when I was growing up in the 1940s, all we had was radio, and on the radio was the New York Yankees, with Joe DiMaggio, Casey Stengel, a Glendale resident, Mickey Mantle, all those, and the only other thing on the radio, I think, was Pittsburgh. It was only two teams. So, when the Yankees played the hated Brooklyn Dodgers, I was always for the Yankees. And then when they decided to move to LA, how could I possibly turn around and love the team that I loved to hate before? So, that's where I'm stuck. When the Angels came here...
Well, when the Angels decide to have a Glendale Angels Night, then we'll revisit the issue.
Absolutely. I'll be there.
How Dodgers it is.
But I understand where you're at, all the newcomers that you don't understand.
Yes.
Me, where I'm coming from.
Of course, of course.
I also would like to say that those Pittsburgh fans up here, Mr. Choa and myself, were kind of hoping we'd see the Pirates, but we were kind of disappointed as well.
Yes, I'm sure.
Okay. Thank you. What's next?
Agenda is Community Event Announcements. It is a three-minute portion, and I don't believe we have any cards submitted for that.
Certainly have no cards in front of me, so we'll close...
Next item is Under Action Items. 8A is Director of Human Resources Regarding Memorandum of Understanding, MOU, between the City of Glendale and Glendale Police Officers Association, GPOA. 8A1 is a resolution adopting a two-year MOU between the city and the GPOA, commence on July 1st, 2014, and terminate after June 30, 2016.
Thank you. Mr. Doyle?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I'm very pleased to bring forth a two-year memorandum of understanding between the city and the Glendale Police Officers Association. As you know, the GPOA represents the rank-and-file sworn police officers, those at the rank of police officer and police sergeant. This MOU is the culmination of several months of negotiations between the city and the GPOA, and we believe this MOU addresses some key areas of cost containment for the city, while at the same time addressing some key priorities of the Officers' Association. Some of the key elements of this MOU are, once again, we have no cost of living increase attached to this in neither the first or the second year, and this is a consistent pattern. We've had no cost of living increases with this particular group since 2010. In exchange, we are making it an option for the officers to be able to cash out some accrued vacation leave, which is a vested benefit, as well as increasing their ability to cash out some floating, some of their floating holiday leave. Additionally, officers in some of the specialized positions, some of the specialized assignments, mostly in investigative services, will now be able to retain their specialty pay in recognition of their expertise in that particular area. And for when they complete that assignment and utilize those skills as they go back into patrol, they'll be able to retain that pay. And there's sort of an added benefit to this, in that it does enable the officers and management to more easily transfer and reassign officers in and out of these various assignments, thus opening up more opportunities for officers to experience some of these assignments. Another big item in this particular MOU has to do with the standardization of the work schedules, namely, the, what's currently a 10-and-a-half-hour shift for those mostly in investigative services, is now going to become a 10-hour shift, but inclusive of a half-hour lunch break. This is, this was a big priority for the GPOA, and it really is the industry standard in how lunch breaks are handled, and it also ensures that officers are appropriately compensated if their lunch does get interrupted for either a call or some level of service that they have to provide. The outline of the MOU is provided in your staff report. The city had some key concessions. The association had key concessions on both sides. One of the big ones for the city was getting a change in our payroll process to where, when we're able to accomplish this, we hope to move to a bi-weekly payroll system and push back the payday by a few days in order to give staff a little bit more time to more accurately and adequately process the payroll. This item is a meet and confer, which needed to be negotiated. For the most part, those are the main components of this particular agreement, and I will note that this is the first multi-year agreement that the city has initiated since 2007, so we're quite proud of that accomplishment. For the most part, in the last few years, we've been dealing with one-year MOUs with all of our groups. So, with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them. Police Chief Castro is here, as is Deputy Chief Pavolitis, and I believe Detective Jason Ross, who's GPOA president, is also here, if you have any questions.
I'll make a motion.
A second? Yes, we have a question from Ms. Najarian.
I'd just like to say that I'm very happy that the city was able to come to terms in a very professional and amicable manner with the GPOA. I think everyone realizes the financial atmosphere that the city has to operate under, and I think for that matter, also on the city's end, we recognize the hard work and the diligence that our police officers put in day-to-day. So, I'm very glad we came to a multi-year contract, as Mr. Doyle indicated. We have pretty much been bumping along year-to-year, but we've got a couple years to look forward and continue the good work together. So, thank you to everyone, both our negotiating staff, as well as for the city, as well as the negotiators on behalf of the GPOA.
And I'll move 8A, and I'll second everything Mr. Najarian said. It's been a pleasure working with the police department on this, and you all know how much we think of our police department and what you've been able to do for this city over the decades. So, thank you, guys, that are here.
And I'm proud to second that.
And I'll call for roll call.
Councilmembers Devine.
Yes.
Friedman. Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Sonanian.
Yes. Thank you. Next item?
9A is Director, under hearings, 9A is Director of Community Development Regarding 2014 Congestion Management Program Self-Certification Process. 9A1 is a resolution binding the city to be in conformance with the program and adopting the local development report.
Mr. Golanian?
Yes, good. City Council, consider our end certification of... ...mandated.
Which is a state-mandated program, was enacted by Senate Bill 471. We do this on an annual basis and contains three components: transportation, demand management, land use analysis program, and, of course, the self-certification. And this covers a period of development activities between June 1st, 2013, and May 31st, 2014. And we report this to MTA. Respectfully...
What does the report say?
What does the report say? The self-certification? We aced it.
You aced it.
This is something of the abominable snowman of administrative bureaucracy at this point in time. We put, we do this public hearing, you probably would want to open the public hearing, and my 20 years of doing this, rarely do we have anyone come and speak to this issue because it's primarily a paper exercise until and unless there is a congestion management fee that sometimes gets discussed, but ultimately is never implemented, that would actually have some kind of impact just by sheer cost. But at this point, it's an exercise that we go through, as Mr. Golanian indicated.
Yes, Mr. Najarian.
I'm going to open the hearing and then close it.
Let's open the public hearing and close it because no one apparently is here.
Thank you, sir.
I don't think that congestion management fee is a half-bad idea.
No, I don't either.
Because I know that at the MTA, we are looking at a county-wide congestion management An exception to the county management fee would be the local municipalities that have implemented their own. So I guess one of the issues is, would we consider implementing our own congestion management fee, congestion mitigation fee, before the MTA, in all of its wisdom, imposes one on the City? That's food for some thought. But I would like to, and year after year, I've pretty much rubber-stamped this report. But I do want to pull it aside this year because this year is like no other year in terms of the growth that Glendale has experienced. And I see in the report, it says only 401 units hit the books, or, let's say, hit the market, multiple family units. I think it's fair to say that in the next year and two years, that number is going to be increased several-fold. So I want to know, compared to last year, where we had very few single-family units, to this year, how has our transportation demand management changed? And how has our land use analysis program changed? During this process, we received notices from Caltrans saying, "You guys in Glendale, I don't know what you're doing, but you're overloading our regional highway system." And we poo-pooed it. We said, "No, we're really not overloading it." But they sent a letter on each and every development that came before us. And let's look ahead. In the upcoming year, I would think it's fair to say that those 400 units may be well in the several thousand units that hit the market. I want to know what we're going to do differently, both in our land use analysis and in our transportation demand. Much of our assumptions for these units are that these are different people. These are the hipsters that are going to be here. They're going to walk, they're going to bike ride, they're not going to need a car. I'd like to know whether our transportation demand management program is going to be addressing that appropriately. I know there's a new organization, it's called, is it Go Glendale? Our TDM group. I don't think we can rubber-stamp this anymore. I think we have to take an active and serious look at this because Glendale is changing. I won't say whether it's changing for the better or the worse, but it's becoming more dense, and there are more residents, and there is more traffic congestion. This is our plan that we, as a council, are supposed to submit. So, in return, we get, how many thousand in our Prop ANC funds that the MTA administers? Or is it millions? It's a significant sum of money. So let's not rubber-stamp this anymore. Let's really look at this for what it is. And I don't know if any other city in the entire county is facing the growth issues that we are facing now and will be facing in the next few years. So let's take this seriously. You know, with 400 units, probably, you know, a rubber stamp might be in order. But looking ahead, we've got some serious growth coming. Let's make sure we're ready for it. And this isn't just building roads. This is land use analysis and transportation demand, which is carpooling, ride-sharing, pedestrian improvements, bike improvements, car sharing, the Zip Cars, everything we talk about. Let's take a good look at this as we go forward.
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, Mr. Najarian, one point of clarification, these 401 units are the permits issued, not necessarily constructed units. Just wanted to make that clear.
What?
Permits.
Permits issued.
Okay, so there's a number here that says there's four between June 1, 2013, and May 31, 2014.
We issued permits...
400 units?
Yes.
Wait a minute. What was I voting no on for the months of January through? Those were design issues or...
Right, right. These are building, actual building.
Okay. So, in any event, the point is still relevant, that in the upcoming year and perhaps two years, we're going to see quite a few units coming in, so...
I think that the issue of Caltrans really speaks to your point, and I'm sorry if I seem flip on it, to the extent that CMP has often been discussed and never been addressed on a regional basis. And it's been prohibitive for individual independent cities to address it because if we were to enact our own congestion management fee, and we are a city that values development as we have over the past 10 years, I mean, if this were, say, Santa Monica, where they have the luxury of the ocean and the ability to say no more and still get investment, new investment, private investment, despite saying no, if, because we're not in that condition, and most cities are not in that situation, the idea of a local congestion management fee has been elusive. And it's been something that gets discussed, as you point out, every now and again, it comes up at Metro, and then it sometimes dies due to the fears of stymying private investment and growth throughout the county. Caltrans is interesting because the letters that they continue to send us are evidence of the fact that there is money necessary, needed on a statewide basis, for this very issue with respect to congestion management. The letters, the fact that they sent a letter on every single one of our projects that were processed through the City, and it was basically, effectively, the same form letter, and they cut and paste different elements from the EIRs, tells you that what they're trying to do is build the case for a statewide or even regional fee. And I'm not saying that that's wrong or that's unnecessary. I'm saying that at some point, policymakers, first in Sacramento, then in downtown LA, are going to have to help us help ourselves if we are going to get this fee up and running. I hear exactly what you're saying. I don't necessarily disagree. I'm only saying, in terms of context, it's something that'll have to happen at that regional level, I believe.
So I'll make the motion if...
I'll second it.
Those comments.
May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers, divine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Sinanian?
Yes.
Next item, please.
9B is Director of Public Works regarding appeal of the Transportation and Parking Commission, TPC, approval to modify existing preferential parking restrictions on the 300 block of West Lexington Drive between Columbus Avenue and Central Avenue. One is a motion sustaining TPC's decision to modify the existing two-hour, 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday to Saturday; two, eight, two hours, 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Monday to Saturday; two is a motion modifying TPC's decision; three is a motion reversing TPC's decision and modifying the existing parking restrictions to 24 hours, seven days a week parking by permit only.
Mr. Golanian?
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, we have a short PowerPoint presentation. I'd like to start off with a brief description of our preferential parking program. The purpose of this program is to limit parking by non-residents on residential streets in highly impacted areas. And permits on this program allow residents to park in excess of the posted time limit restrictions. The program is a balanced approach designed to afford residents preferential parking, but also to share the on-street parking with the general public as much as possible. This program began in 1980 as a street-by-street solution. We currently have 134 street segments enrolled in the program. We also have established two special districts, namely, Glendale Community College District that was created in 1993 and now has 40 streets included, and, more recently, South Brand Special District that was created in 2013, which contains seven streets. Types of the preferential parking is essentially established on a specific segment of a street, fronting residential properties only, or it's based on the boundaries of a special district. Regulations for the special district is consistent for all the streets within the district. Regulations for individual streets, though, vary on a case-by-case basis, although we try to maintain a uniform pattern. We issue approximately 5,000 permits a year to just over 2,000 residents. A little bit about enforcement. Typically, hours for full-time enforcement staff is from 5:30 AM to 7:30 PM, Monday to Friday, and 9:30 AM to 7:30 PM on weekends. Sometimes we adjust these hours for special events, first day of school, or new parking regulations. We also have part-time enforcement staff, officers for additional coverage, and as well as police patrol that take requests when dedicated enforcement staff are not on duty. Next. As shown on this map, the 300 block of West Lexington Drive, the subject of this hearing, is bordered by Central Avenue to the east and Columbus Avenue to the west. Again, this exclude parking in front of commercial properties. So in January and February 2014, in anticipation of a TPC hearing, staff conducted two occupancy studies. And as you can see on this matrix, these were spot-checked. In each column, when you see a period of time, doesn't mean the counts were made for two hours, but one given count during that two-hour period. The, this chart shows essentially a range of 52% to 86% from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and goes up to 98% from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM. As you can see, this indicates that there is not a problem finding parking in the daytime hours before 6:00 PM, but definitely after 6 o'clock. So what are some of the existing conditions? Preferential parking on 300 block of West Lexington Drive was established in 1982. Current restrictions is for two-hour, except by permit, 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday to Saturday. We have approximately 58 on-street parking spaces, and we say 58 because these are not striped. And it's an estimate, depending on the size of the vehicles that are parked, from a little mini Cooper to extended bed pickup truck, or that one guy who parks right in the middle of, between two driveways and blocks, space for two cars. There are currently 120 multifamily units and 10 single-family dwellings. Currently, we have 28 residents who have active permits. We have similar preferential parking restrictions in the neighborhood on California, Salem, and Wilson. And in February, 84% of residents signed a petition to request that these existing parking regulations be adjusted. We conducted, TPC conducted a hearing, this is April erroneously, but it was on March 24th. 14 speakers spoke at the hearing, and we also received five written comments. Something to note is, the initial petition was based on limited evening parking availability only, but several additional concerns were raised at the hearing. Ultimately, the TPC approved staff's recommendation of a two-hour, except by permit, 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM parking restriction, Monday to Saturday. The TPC's decision was appealed and brought front of City Council, and on June 3rd, you directed staff to conduct a public hearing, which we're having today. Between June 16 and June 22nd, we conducted another occupancy study, and this shows similar results with higher percentages, though. What we found out, that approximately 40% of the parked vehicles belong to residents and 60% to guests and visitors. This shows a range from 71% to 93%, from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and 91% to 100% after 6:00 PM until 10:00 PM. And we have excluded the trash pickup days and the street maintenance days, for accuracy. Again, this indicates that there is not a problem finding parking in the daytime hours. Some of the benefits of the TPC decision, as you can see, we believe that this will encourage short-term parking and discourage long-term parking. It is consistent with parking meters on Central Avenue. It will create less confusion for visitors. It will minimize negative impacts to adjacent residential streets because of overflow of parking. And it may change some existing parking behaviors. At the TPC's direction, we were to reevaluate and conduct additional field occupancy studies in about four to six months, and return to TPC for adjustments if necessary. Some of the potential adjustments that were discussed at the TPC were perhaps to extend existing regulations until 12:00 AM, or even later, or reduce it to one-hour parking by permit, or even include Sundays. I'd like to note that these variations will create inconsistency and may cause confusion. So the resident's current petition request is for a 24/7 permit parking only. This will reserve 58 on-street spaces for that block of Lexington Drive, and for residents and their guests. Residents must purchase annual guest permits. This will require all the residents to purchase permits who currently don't and who want to park on-street for any period of time. Residents of adjacent streets will not be able to park on this block. Customers for adjacent businesses will not be able to park on this block. And as you saw from the charts, parking will be massively underutilized during daytime hours. And this will encourage long-term parking and reduce turnover. And we don't believe it's a balanced solution. In summary, we have averaged for January, February, and June field studies, the occupancy counts for existing, current day existing regulations from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, average occupancy 64%. Was in January, February, and June was 70%, slightly higher. And the currently unregulated period of 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM, in January, February, was 84, and in June, it jumped to 93%. Both of these are over 75% threshold for preferential parking. I'd like to note that the goal of the preferential parking is to implement restrictions that increase the quality of life for impacted residents while minimizing negative effects on adjacent residents and businesses. Therefore, staff respectfully recommends upholding the TPC's decision of a two-hour, except by permit, 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Monday to Saturday. Mr. Tad Dombrowski, our parking manager, and I will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Golanian. I'm going to open the public hearing, and unless my colleagues have questions, right now they want to ask, okay, we'll go to the speakers.
On the process, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. This is a de novo hearing.
Yes, sir.
Mr. City Attorney. So this council's free to fashion any remedy.
That's correct. That, as long as it complies with the code.
It's not just up or down on TPC.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Najarian. First speaker, Rima Hakopian. Followed by Vagan Simonian. Ms. Hakopian, I know you've been sort of the advocate for the...
Ms. Hakopian, I know you've been sort of the advocate for the residents and kind of a spokesperson for them, so I'm willing to give you more time than everyone else. So how much time do you think you need? How much time do you think you need? Five minutes, you have five minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Sinianian, council members, for your time tonight. It seems, though, we're having trouble with the 300 West block. A simple parking situation has taken over a year to resolve. I don't know what there is to say that we haven't already addressed. We left the last meeting, being granted an appeal, a hearing to consider the appeal that we have filed. The TPC is again asking, or suggesting, the 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. restriction, but we already discussed why this would be inappropriate if you refer to the original appeal. The reasons would still hold true. It will not work. 6:00 a.m. we don't need. 10:00 p.m. does not resolve the issue, because that only really gives us one additional hour, unless, if the council is suggesting that it's the residents' duty to police the street and see who parks and marks the cars for two hours, and then calls the police because the enforcement has gone home at 7:30. So, which by the way, I have done several times. It takes over an hour for the police to arrive, and then they still have to mark the car for two hours. The TPC latest decision states that their recommended restriction is consistent with those on Central Avenue, but Central Avenue is an entirely commercial street, whereas Lexington is all residential. You cannot compare such vastly different streets where the type of use is not all alike. Furthermore, it was the poor planning and approval on the part of the city that created this parking problem in the first place. As Mr. Sackin on the TPC board noted, this poor planning during an earlier council meeting, the city of Glendale allowed for an extension, for an expansion, that brings hundreds of additional vehicles to a business establishment without sufficient onsite parking. It also needs to be said that this is a business on Central with footage on Central, not Lexington Avenue business. Yes, the business said it had off-site parking contracts, but a business cannot force people to valet park, so the burden, again, rests entirely on the residents when it is the business who should be responsible to provide sufficient onsite parking, and the city who should ensure that the business does not get the required approvals to operate unless the standards are met. And the notion that the TPC's recommendation allows short-term parking but prevents long-term parking is false, because there is no effective parking enforcement. As I said earlier, parking enforcement hours end at 7:30 p.m. So technically, parking there until 10:00, really, when enforcement has left home at 7:30, means that they could park there at 5:30 p.m. and stay there the entire night, because there's no enforcement. Our original petition did request 24/7 parking by permit, but when we appealed, we took into account potential underutilized parking during the business hours, as Mr. Gulanian states. And we gave consideration to non-residents still being allowed to park, and had a well-thought-out approach, how to solve this problem with a specific set of restrictions that would be beneficial for all parties, including businesses. Please approve a motion specifically implementing those restrictions. We don't want the TPC's recommendation, and we're not asking for 24/7, but we don't want approval of some open-ended motion with no definitive restrictions when we have no idea what would take place. If those are the three alternatives before us this evening, as you've stated, A, B, and C, then we choose a 24/7, but that's not what we're really asking.
Are you done?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, well, don't go away. So, let me ask you this, so you're not asking for 24/7? I understand that you're saying in the alternative, you are asking, so what is it that you're asking for, if it's not 24/7?
If you would please, do you have the appeal?
I have the appeal, yes.
Okay. If you would please look at page two of three, the recommendation. We are asking, please look at number one. Monday through Friday should be.
Sorry, there are two ones on that page.
At the bottom.
Bottom one, okay.
One, A.
Yes.
Monday through Friday should be permitted parking only from 3:00 p.m. on to 2:00 a.m., with two-hour parking from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. So we're saying, keep the 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. two-hour as-is. Allow the businesses to have their clients, their guests, to go to the businesses. But after 3:00 is when children, students come home, workers start leaving work to come home. We're asking, from 3:00 p.m. on, so the residents can have the street back. That's Monday through Friday. And then we're asking for weekends when we have the most parking problem, including Sundays, which was also in the original petition. We're asking for 11:00 a.m. in the morning through the night until 2:00 a.m.
Thank you. Whatever plan is approved and implemented in the end, it will still require enforcement. So the enforcement issue that you pointed out, the fact that enforcement ends at 7:00 o'clock and so on, well, that's still going to be the case. So how will that issue be remedied?
That issue would be very simply solved, because currently, because there's no parking enforcement, you can technically park there at 4:00 p.m. or with the new suggestion with what the TPC is suggesting, until 10:00 p.m. One could park there at 5:30 p.m. and leave the car there all night. It would be the residents' responsibility to mark the car and call the police, not the enforcement, not the parking enforcement, because they've gone home. It would be the residents' responsibility to call the police and have a car come out and mark the car again, because they're not going to take my word for it. I've tried. They're going to have to mark the car again for two hours. So let's say I call the police at 6:00 in the evening. They would come out again approximately, it would take about an hour, mark the car, come back in two hours. So it becomes a burden for the residents to continuously monitor as to who's parking there and when they start parking there. But if it's permitted, most people will not want to violate that law, knowing that a police officer could drive by any time and cite them. And I don't have to police the street. The police themselves, at the very least, I could pick up the phone and call the police, and the police would come out, without having to mark the cars back and forth and come back again. And people typically don't want to violate the law anyway.
Okay, I understand your point. That's all the questions I had for Ms. Hakopian. There are no other questions, thank you.
Thank you.
I just note for the record, alternative number two, a motion modifying TPC decision and directing City Attorney to prepare the findings speaks to the notion that this isn't just a black or white issue. So you can modify those findings in any which way. We aren't saying either uphold TPC or do away with TPC.
Certainly.
Based on some of the information you'll get tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Wach. Next speaker is Vagim Simonian, and followed by Exiomara Ferretti. It's three minutes. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Vagim Simonian. I am resident 320 West Lexington. After a reminder of this conversation, I don't think I can add anything, but anyway, by listening to City Engineering, it looks like there is no problem. But I'm living there 11 years and more, so problem is going up and up. So I think it's when you see me, you see my face, but somebody from backseat, I'm a backside. So it depends how you're watching the situation, and how do you want to solve this problem? By helping someone, punishing the other one, or opposite. This is look like war between the residents and some businesses or something else. This is look like, I'm not saying it's a war, but there is some solution. It's best thing to do, it's like brothers, like neighbors, we have to respect each other, anyway. That's why we have to do something for the restaurant customers, so after we can get something. That's where you have to feed the tree to get the fruit. So the problem coming technically from the restaurant customer, most likely, in the evening time. Daytime, it's coming from the big building, it's a medical. So I am in disabled, so sometime I have a time, and I have to stay so I can see more. That's why I have my idea, I have my decision. So if we give some space for the parking, some for valet parking, in a restaurant space some to help them, people to park there, and the valet, they are professional, they can park, and they will not bother the traffic, because sometime they're coming like, not double, triple parking. We have kids, we have a family, and you know the other one horn, other one using barboards, you know. I'm not hunters to take the gun and shoot, it's not the Soviet Union, we are in United States, so that's why we have to respect. Just I'm asking you, try to make nice, beautiful decision to help both sides. I don't want to ask any permit, anything, just try to make wise decision. That will help you, that will be help everybody when we go another life, so we can get less judgment. Please try to help us.
Certainly.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Exiomara Ferretti.
Is it three minutes?
You have three, do you need more?
I won't need more.
Okay, great. State your name for the record, please.
Exiomara Ferretti. I live on Lexington and have been living there for 10 years. Rima has said everything, and the gentleman before me has stated his disability. What I do believe is, if we cannot receive what we're asking for, if we can meet halfway, it's a simple solution. I mean, it is chaos. I mean, I've had to call the cops. I'm no longer at peace with my own neighbors because they own houses, and they believe that the parking in front of their house, I can't even park there. And officers had to be dispatched, I mean, it gets, and then when my brother came out, the man thought my brother was going to do something. So there's altercation, there's tension, and I believe as a TCP and City Council, you guys are here to keep order, resolve issues of the community. And we have come forward, pointed out the problems, and we, you know, came up with our solutions. You have recommended your own, but if we cannot get our request, I think we should meet halfway.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Ferretti. We have no more speakers. Going to close the public hearing.
Maybe just by way of context, I think something that Mr. Simonian and Ms. Ferretti had indicated, and the term "simple" gets used occasionally, it's probably anything but, for the very examples that were cited here, we've had issues of parking on this street for, by my count on the presentation, 32 years, to the extent that you have not just the issues between the business and residents, as Mr. Simonian had indicated, but also between the residents themselves, single-family, multifamily residents. And you saw the distribution of the types of residential uses that are there. So this will be difficult, I think, no matter what you do, because as Mr. Golanian indicated, to the extent that we're impacting the way that the residents park in those off-hours, well, that's just going to spill over into the surrounding streets, and that's something that you're going to have to take into account as we search for that simple solution.
Right. So in other words, as drivers start looking for parking off of Lexington and onto the neighboring streets, we may encounter the neighboring street residents coming and saying, well, we're having this problem, so therefore make us exclusive, so.
And you're trying to balance all of that, absolutely. There is a little bit of a chain effect there, and it's not new to this neighborhood. That's the hard part, is just trying to remedy a generation's worth of land use decisions.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Golanian, are there any comments in response to or in reaction to the points made by the speakers?
Mr. Mayor, thank you for asking. One additional point I'd like to make, and if it wasn't clear in my presentation, is when we talk about exclusive, not by permit, 24/7, or 3:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. request, that means even the residents' guests will not be able to park either without a permit for any given period of time. If we have gardeners, repair persons, they will need to obtain permits as well to be able to park and go serve the residences.
Right. And to the extent that it's only 58 spots, and even that, you know, it's arguable whether it's 58 or not, well, how do we determine who gets the permit? I mean, every resident, so long as they can prove that they're a resident, are entitled to a permit?
Yes, sir.
But according to the number of individual units and houses, that's not even going to be enough for all of them, right? Okay, so could that lead to problems?
Conceivably, you have more residents and more cars on the street than there are spaces, and so if, for example, not to pick on the single-family homeowners, but if they aren't using their garage, or even if the apartments aren't using their garages for parking cars, but rather for storing personal items, well, that just exacerbates an already tight situation.
Okay. Is there, just one last question, I'll go to you, Ms. Devine. Is there a fee associated with the permit?
Mr. Mayor, it's $25 on an annual basis.
Okay, so residents who today could park there for free, set aside the fact whether parking was available or not, will now be forced to have that permit, to pay for that permit in order to legally be able to park there?
Yes, sir, residents and their guests.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Ms. Devine?
Yes, I'd like to ask Ms. Hakopian a couple of questions, if I could.
Do you need to open the public hearing for this? Okay, let's open the public hearing again, that's okay. Yes, please.
Just two questions. Thank you. Are you having mostly a problem with the residents or with people there for other businesses? Which?
Most of the overflow of the parking issues that's coming to the street is from the banquet hall.
Okay.
Because they have, they hold venues, 300, 400 people in one evening.
Right. My second question is, do you see a problem with having to purchase permits for guests or gardeners, did you say?
Absolutely not.
Okay, those are my questions.
This petition was done, and we had over 84% signatures, understanding that we're asking for permits and that you buy the permit. $25 a year per person to have peace for the whole year is definitely doable. And as the survey shows, as the work that was done, the analysis, we clearly have parking issues.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hakopian.
I'd like, may I continue?
Of course, please.
I just, you know, I like to try to reach compromises. You may sit down.
That's okay, thank you.
I'm just speaking to my colleagues. Obviously... I'm just speaking to my colleagues. Obviously, this particular permit process, the TCP or what is out there now, isn't working. It isn't working for the residents at all. I know that the owner of the banquet hall is doing everything he can to provide valet parking, trying to secure lots, and has one already rented. And so I know that he's trying as hard as he can, so that there isn't a problem. So therefore, I think we have to perhaps find this medium ground. And what I would suggest, and I think, City Manager, you alluded to this, I think in a conversation with me, if I may, that perhaps from Central to the alley, we leave that at two-hour parking, so that everyone can use that. Those that are at the medical building, those that are at Phoenisha, whatever, anyone can use that for two hours. From that alley to Columbus, let's think about by permit only, from, let's say, 4:00 or 5:00 PM to 12:00 AM in the morning, for the residents. That way, everyone that's going to the restaurant or the other businesses are closed, will be able to use the valet parking. And he's promised to have adequate parking, and he's been true to his word up until now. And there is also on-street parking that can be used. And then, the rest of the day, which would be like from, what, 9:00 AM until, midnight until 9:00 AM until 4:00 PM, would be two-hour parking, or by permit. So that everyone that's there during the day, because I was down there at lunchtime, and there was adequate parking, there were even underused, there were empty spaces. I went down at dinnertime, and there were spaces on the street that were not being used, the parking meters that could be used, which means that someone's making a decision not to use those meters. They're using the residential parking. So I think that would be my solution, my suggestion, and I think it's a kind of a balanced, if we can come to a balanced and a fair decision for everybody, so that the restaurant is able to use from Central to Columbus half of the day. And then, when the residents come home at 4:00 or 5:00 o'clock, their spaces are there if they have their permits, if they bought the permits. A lot of them are going to park in their apartment buildings. They're all not parking on the street. Some of them actually have apartment parking, right, and residential parking, so, well, you can't talk to me. But that's kind of my solution, or my idea of a solution.
Thank you, Ms. Devine.
You're welcome.
We have a former transportation commissioner. It's very knowledgeable about these issues.
The first thought that comes to mind is to let the TPC's decision be given a chance to see if it works out or not. I suppose if we had this discussion maybe 20 years ago, the members of the single-family homes would be before us, asking for the same sort of restrictions, and saying, "The problem on this street are all the apartment buildings that have gone in." Apartment buildings that have gone in, I presume, Mr. Galanian, with inadequate parking, whether it met the code or not, inadequate in reality. And I think that's what's causing the overflow of the cars into the street. Now, I did ask for a survey as to the off-street parking that was available, whether owners of the apartment buildings are renting spaces to others that are not residents of the unit. It happens. It happens, Ms. Hakopian, it happens. Whether residents of the single-family, there was a gentleman that came, I remember the last meeting, he, I believe, was the property immediately west of Phoenisha, said that he has no room to park. And I went to his house, and he's got a long driveway where you could fit probably six vehicles. And I didn't understand that. But what it told me is that he didn't want to park in the driveway, he wanted to park on the street. I think that's a larger problem than a business owner who has affirmatively gone out, hired valet parking services, and rented parking lots to encourage his patrons to have convenient parking. I'm not in favor of any sort of parking scheme that's going to give an exclusive use of the street to residents. I see that as a problem. We have 120 units and 58 parking spaces. How about if we just hold a raffle, and we raffle off 50 spots, 50 permits only, and the other eight be used for whoever wants to come in? And let's say, from the alley to Central. Is that a fair solution? The problem is, there are too many apartments there with inadequate parking. That's the real problem. And I presume that if there's a permit parking, that, is it an unlimited number of parking permits per unit? As long as you pay for it, you can get it? How about Mr. Galanian?
Yes, that's in accordance with the--
Okay. Well, that's completely ridiculous. We've got 120 units, 58 spaces. The residents of those units could ask for two, three each, if they're willing to pay for it. That's, what, 360 cars that are permitted to park in 58 spaces? I don't see that as a solution here. I firmly believe that what we should do is take a moderate step, and that is to let the decision of the TPC play out and see how it goes. There's no harm in that. For the residents to say, "That's not going to work," well, I don't know what to say. I think the residents should encourage, well, I guess part of my problem is with the owner. I mean, the owners are renting these units, and there are limited parking spaces available. If there were enough parking spaces, we wouldn't have this problem. So let's get past that. If the units, if the apartment buildings--
Let's see.
No, no, let's, Ms. Hakopian.
If the apartment buildings had adequate parking, we wouldn't have this problem. That's clear to me. And to turn a street into a private street for the residents and exclude visitors, exclude workmen, exclude anyone that happens to park there, I think sets a very bad precedent. I think, again, the best thing to do is to see how this works with the TPC's decision. They deliberated on this for hours, and took testimony--
Please, no comments from the audience.
And I think we owe it to them, if we have any respect for our commissions, to let that at least play out, and then reassess the situation later. And it's never closed, it can always come back to us.
Let me ask you a question. When you asked the audience whether this was a fair solution, was that a rhetorical question, or you want someone from them to come back and respond to that question?
It's probably better if we don't go back and forth.
Yes. I'm sorry, I can't, I can't--
The public hearing was closed. I'm sorry.
Yes, Ms. Devine?
And with all due respect to Councilman Najarian, the TPC really didn't give them anything. They gave them another hour at night, but there's no enforcement there.
Let's not have outbursts from the audience, please.
And in actuality, she's correct. There is not enforcement there, unless they call. And that way, you're putting the onus on the neighbors, and I think that's totally unfair. I think that it's our responsibility to be, I don't know, considerate of, you know, our police department is, you know, stretched as it is. And to have to be going out there and looking for parked cars that don't belong there, I think is really asking too much of them. They're not, they can't do it. That's why I'm sure that they're waiting an hour for them to get there, because they just, we just don't have enough police to do that. And I think if, and I think if they have these permits, and they put them on the cars, then they know who belongs there and who doesn't. Mr. Galanian, I'd like to ask you, is there any way that we can, the council can say, "Well, let's issue one permit per household or per apartment," so that they don't go and buy 50 of them, or, you know, how many they can afford? Can we do something like that?
The only problem that you have with that, ma'am, is then you're in the business of verifying when Mr. Najarian comes in and says, "Well, I lost my permit," or "My car got stolen," or give it a name, and now somebody has to go out and circulate back. One of the very first jobs I had as an intern working in the city of Monrovia was issuing parking permits for streets just like this. And invariably, we can move forward with any number of iterations of the restrictions, it will be a symbolic gesture, because the issues that exist on the street are going to exist on the street largely because of the amount of folks with cars that are on that street. The restaurant, no doubt about it, adds to the mix. And so I hear exactly what you're saying, of, "Let's try to be considerate and find something, this middle ground." Again, I would just caution, the middle ground's going to be somewhat elusive. Could we follow on that to say, "Yes, we'll try to verify," you know, put it under, one of the things we used to do is, "Under penalty of perjury, the information I am putting on this application is true and correct." But if no one's ever going to, it's like the enforcement argument, if no one's going to actually go and verify, "Did your son go back to college and you need it yet?" It's a little bit hollow, but it makes you feel good.
Well, and even on the permits, you can say, "Issue one per family. If it's lost, then you've lost it. You can't have another one." I mean, there must be ways of regulating that somehow, that we can, this can be worked out. Mr. Galanian, do you have any suggestions, or am I?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Devine, it's a good suggestion. We need to look into it. It makes the process more complicated, and there may be residences and units who truly deserve preferential parking permits, like Mr. Ochoa mentioned. You have, they have kids in college, they may not have adequate parking, and one is really going to impact their quality of life. And even in the absence of a preferential parking restriction, there will still be 58 parking spaces, give or take, and 130 units vying to get there on a first-time basis.
Well, in that case, they're fighting with each other, they're not fighting with outsiders. That's the other thing that worries me. That worries me when I hear that they're fighting amongst each other, they're having to put trashcans in the spots to save them, so that they come home from work and have someplace to park. And they're getting into altercations with other people. And that bothers me. You know, is this, you know, are we just kind of standing back, waiting for something to happen, and then we're going to do something? I think we have to look at this, I think, in a serious way.
I completely understand. And Councilmember Devine, if we only issue one permit per unit or per residence, then the other members of the family will go to other streets and park on their streets and impact the parking on that area.
Okay. Just one question, Mr. Weaver, before I take your turn. This enforcement issue?
Yes, sir.
Is there anything we can do about that?
We will roll enforcement on scheduled basis, like we would emphasizing anything from driving without a seatbelt, distracted driving, to DUI checkpoints. We'll allocate resources and go do sweeps at off-hours to go and do kind of compliance checks. Can we do that on a regular basis? No, we do it on a kind of a sporadic, periodic basis, to do kind of what Ms. Hakopian was talking about, in terms of just making people think twice, that, you know, you could get that ticket because you'll see the enforcement folks out there.
But that's not something we've done in the past.
We can do--
On that street on Lexington.
I believe we have done, but not with any kind of regularity. We go and hit different areas, catches, catch can.
And doing it with some regularity, like you said, not permanently, but, I don't know, once a week, once every two weeks? Would that yield results?
It could for a period of time, until people figure out how to game that particular arrangement. I can tell you that as, if we are to change, whatever the change is going to be in terms of the parking restrictions, we would allocate resources for a limited time to do more emphasis on this particular street, to make sure that the new rules, kind of, they take root, and that would help to establish what that new baseline is, certainly.
Okay. But so do we or do we not have enforcement after 70?
Not with any kind of regularity.
But sometimes we do.
Occasionally, we will.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Weaver?
Okay. I sympathize with the people who live on the street. But I have that same sympathy for virtually every street in this city. I've driven around all the surrounding streets. Every street has the same problem. All South Glendale has the same problem. Even on East Glen Oaks, Kenny and I have lived in for 75 years. Never used to be cars on the street. Now there's cars on the street. What's changed? Now, there's no solution to your problem, none whatsoever. If you solve the problem yours, it's going to go somewhere else. And every other street is going to come in here and want preferential parking. You're not going to be the only one, because they're all facing the same thing. No speaking.
That's, no, I'm sorry. That's the rule, I mean-- Please.
Come on, Mr. Mayor.
Please, yeah. I mean, I don't--
Mr. Mayor, my recommendation is, the speakers are out of order at this point. You've had the testimony, you've given, you know, and that you exercise your discretion--
Requesting that there be no outbursts--
I'm entitled to my opinion as an elected representative, so I'm giving it. There's no solution. Streets are public parking, public. Doesn't mean residential parking, it means public, which residents and public share. Banquet halls, you talk about valet. Every banquet hall in this city does valet parking, every one of them. I haven't seen a banquet hall yet that has adequate parking on-site. Police, we have 30 square miles in this city. Maybe 10 patrol cars out there at night, or even during the day. We have 52 gangs operating in this city. We have speeders all over the place. We hear complaints up the yin yang here about, "Why aren't the police doing this, this, this?" Now, you would like the police to be down on your one-block street. It isn't going to happen. It isn't going to happen. How can we patrol the rest of the city to give the safety to all the residents that you want? It isn't going to happen. Now, let me, I did some research, and let me explain this. Before 1952, there were no parking requirements at all in this city, for single-family or multifamily, none. You get a permit to build a house, hey, if you don't want to put any parking, you didn't have to. That changed in '52. Multifamily were required to have one paved space, paved. You put some asphalt down and park on it. That's all that was required. Between 1950, oh, by the way, before '52, there were 10 single-family and five multifamily buildings built, between the turn of the century and '52. From '52 to '82, that one paved space, four multi-unit apartment buildings were built. Then we increased the parking requirement. From '62 to '67, you had to have one and two paved parking spaces depending the size of the units. Three multifamily units were built, multifamily unit buildings were built in that timeframe. Then we increased the parking requirement again. And from '67 to 1989, you had to have one and two fully enclosed spaces. Those are garages. That started in '67. Seven multifamily units were built under those standards. Then in 1989, they upped the requirement again, multifamily, two and three full parking spaces, garages, plus a quarter guest parking space for each. One multifamily unit was built during that time. So you've had 130 units built, actual spaces out there, 178. But if you want to look at the range, if you apply today's parking standards, and we're living today with mom and pop both working, and some teenage kids driving cars, et cetera, if you look at all that, the single-family of 10 units with 10 spaces would have between 20 and 50 parking spaces required under today's codes. Multifamily, 20 multifamily units, 120 units, 168 parking spaces. Multifamily, 20 multifamily units, 120 units, 168 parking spaces. Today, under today's standards, you would have to have somewhere between 240 and 360 parking spaces, plus another 30 for guest parking. You now have totals of between 260 and 440 parking spaces required on that block under today's standards. How can you come in and ask us to revert back to the standards they were built on? This is true on every street in this city, virtually. Our standards have changed. People have changed. Teenagers drive cars all the time now. Where are you going to park them? It's unsolvable. This city cannot solve that equation anywhere in the city. You can legislate and put in block-by-block 24-hour parking, but the parking is going to go somewhere else. It's got to. And they're going to be in. We have too many cars on the road, you know that, you just drive down our streets and you see all the cars. You're not going to get people out of their cars. They want more cars. So I see no solution. Now, whatever time limits you want to put on, put on. But it's a Band-Aid approach. And I can't wait for the next block to come in here and want their fair share of our city parking, public parking spaces. Okay. Whatever my colleagues want, fine, but it's unsolvable. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Ochoa.
Trying to find something, and I would defer to Mr. Galanian and Mr. Dombrowski, but from what I hear Councilmembers saying, and certainly I think Mr. Weaver made the point very clearly, that whatever you do, I think, is going to be somewhat of a Band-Aid approach regardless, whether you do nothing or you do something. The problem exists. So if we were possibly to look at an evening type of restriction, still give an hour for folks to be able to park along that street, should they be lucky enough to find an open spot for deliveries, for service people, for whatever, west of the alley up to Columbus, that would be kind of a hybrid between what TPC has put forth and what the residents are looking for, and actually extend that restriction from 10 o'clock, say, to midnight, when most of the activity has then died down. Folks who are out generally are back in by midnight most every night, maybe not Friday and Saturday, but at that point, I don't know that you have a clear expectation that you're going to be able to find a parking spot. I don't think that satisfies anyone, but that's kind of where we-
I'll move 9B1.
I'm sorry.
For discussion purposes and for-
9B1? I'll second it.
Sustain the TPC's decision.
I'm sorry.
9B1, the motion would be to sustain the TPC's decision. That's the motion on the floor.
Give it a try.
Okay, I'm not ready to vote yet.
Okay.
So, yeah, go ahead.
Well, I was going to say, instead of going with this plan, which in essence hasn't worked, why don't we try something new and see if it does work? Something like the permit-only, and see if it does work. If that doesn't work, we can come back at 90 days and do this other two-hour parking.
Well, that's what Mr. Najarian is sort of suggesting, except the other way around.
Yes, right. And I'm saying that hasn't worked.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm saying, what I think-
Has been implemented.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Devine, we have not implemented the 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. restriction yet, pending the outcome of this appeal.
Right, but that doesn't give them anything more. It gives, there is no enforcement. You could give them until 2:00 a.m. in the morning, and there's no enforcement.
You can answer that question. That would-
How about enforcement?
In the absence of enforcement, how will that plan address the concerns of the residents?
Mr. Mayor, as Mr. Ochoa mentioned, enforcement is available upon request by the residents.
But I think even more to the point, as we make any adjustment, we would roll out enforcement on a sporadic basis to help ensure that whatever the council decides takes root in terms of what the expectations of the Parkers are.
So let me ask you a technical question, then. Let's say we agree on either, sort of like a three-month trial period, either it's the TPC, as suggested by Mr. Najarian, or an alternative plan, as suggested by Ms. Devine. What's the process for the residents to come back? I mean, do they have to file fees? Do they have to? I mean, because that would not be fair.
It would seem to me that you wouldn't want them to file an appeal, but rather we would bring it back.
Is there a procedure for that?
It is the council's pleasure.
If I may, I think if the council puts a sunset on our timeline, then it could come back to the council automatically. If that's their desire, you could remand it back to TPC for a certain period. Only if you just give an action without any sort of time limit or sunset, then a new application would be required.
One thing I did leave out, just for council's consideration, is that if you were to move towards, or to uphold the TPC decision, that, I think, is more in alignment with other restrictions we've put in place. And so, as Mr. Garcia indicates, you can bring it back at your pleasure. If you were to move in a different direction, more towards what Ms. Devine is indicating, I would suggest to you that you do come back at some evaluation period and actually have it as a fixed pilot period with a sunset, that you have to affirmatively continue because, as Mr. Weaver indicates, if you do something extraordinary on this street, it is very likely that California, Milford, Wilson, they also will want this same thing. And as, again, as Mr. Weaver indicated, if you push it here, it pops out there, and you'll see all these residents start to feed on one another's parking.
So to continue on that subject matter, do we have currently sort of this exclusive scheme anywhere else in the downtown area?
Mr. Mayor, by exclusive, you mean 24/7?
Yeah.
Yes, we do have a handful throughout the city.
I know where the car dealers are.
There is one on Windsor within the South Brand Special District that was granted 24/7 prior to the establishment of the South Brand Special District, and I might add, it's hugely underutilized.
Okay.
And remember, those, I'm guessing about 10 patrol cars cover the area from far, far north Glendale, clear down to San Fernando Roads.
Ideally, we would not use black and whites to do the parking.
Well, you don't have the motors out there at night, do you?
Well, as I say, whatever decision you make, we would inaugurate that decision with a degree of enforcement weaning off after a period of time, just to make sure that the behavior takes root as best we can.
I'd like to know where the police are being pulled off of to do this.
Would not be police, or it would be your parking enforcement officers, CSOs, or other folks that would be more in alignment with the allocation of resources.
And besides, as the residents have stated, the way the police do it, not because they're the police, but because they just show up to something and they have to start the process from zero, is not efficient. So we wouldn't want to pull police off of their regular duties on that issue.
And I would also think that if they had permits, the police probably wouldn't be necessary very often at all, if at all.
Can we do a shorter period than a three-month period? Can we do a month?
I don't know that you would be able to rely on the information.
Data, okay. Okay, can we do two months?
I think you want more time to give you-
I want more time.
And in fact, considering the time of year that we're in right now, I would even suggest that you get past the holidays with whatever your decision is.
Yes, Mr. Najarian.
I do want to point out, I'm a little bit hesitant to announce to everyone watching that there's no enforcement after a certain hour of the evening, but I do have some faith in Glendale drivers to observe no parking signs and parking restrictions and to act accordingly in adherence to those restrictions. I mean, there are some, there are some ethical drivers out there who will obey signs. I'm not saying everyone, but we're discussing this as if, unless there's a tow truck, a hook fastened to the rear of someone's bumper, that that person's going to continue to park there in violation of the law. So let's have some faith in our drivers.
Mr. Mayor, there was a motion made and seconded.
Before you go that route, I'll tell you, I'm not ready to vote. I'm just not, I'm not going to vote for the TPC or for the alternative suggested by Ms. Devine, and I want to continue this till the next meeting, when all of the council will be here, which means it'll be three meetings from now. Right, because of Mr. Najarian. And we'll have Councilmember Friedman back for meetings. And then we'll, I think, we'll be, I'll be better equipped to vote on this, and again, we'll have five council members present, take a vote on this. I'd rather we do it sort of in a more solid way than sort of do it and then start waiting for another three months or four months.
But what do we do with the motion, Ron?
You can make a substitute motion to continue the meeting to September 23rd? No. You're going the 9th and 16th?
23rd.
16th. 23rd. He's gone the 19th and 16th.
Can I make that motion?
Ms. Devine can?
Yes. So move.
And so why are we doing this? So Ms. Friedman gets to-
Yeah, we have five people, and I need to consider this a little more.
Now, she'll have to watch the tapes and read all the information, because the public hearing has been closed.
And can we all request that she does so?
And I would only support that if there is no further testimony from the public-
Yes, there will be no-
And that the public hearing remain closed, and it be submitted only for deliberation and discussion by the council.
Yes, that was my intent. No public hearing will be opened or closed on this matter.
I move.
And Mr.-
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Devine?
Yes.
Friedman? Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Free, elect, and Lee, yes.
Mayor Sinanian?
Yes.
Thank you. So 23rd, we'll vote on this.
Don't bring anything.
To Mr. Galanian's office, and we'll-
Mr. Mayor?
I mean, the hearing is closed, and my recommendation is not to include that.
Thank you. Good night. It is. What's next, Mr. Clerk?
Next item on the agenda is oral communications. Discussion is limited. It is not part of this agenda. Speaker has allowed five minutes. Members of the council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. City manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. First speaker is Diana Mirzakhanyan, followed by Richard Lebov.
Hello, everyone. My name is Diana. What I have to say is extremely, extremely important. Like, I've been being harassed for two and a half years by gangsters, masons, and occultists for two people in particular who live in Glendale. But I want to address the entire council. Like, I've been finding it difficult to trust anyone, especially because of how these people have been attacking me for these two individuals who are younger than me, and I'm assuming very, very jealous of me and absolutely obsessed with me. It has been so terrible that, like, morning, noon, and night, these people won't leave me alone for these two individuals. Like, for two and a half years, if you guys could imagine that, like, from the moment you wake up to the moment you go to sleep, like, they're constantly trying to get to But like I said, I'm having trouble trusting anyone, and I thought that these people just, I don't know, weren't around anymore, and that's why these seats weren't taken. But I feel that it's extremely important for me to address the entire council, so you guys could all be there to speak about it amongst yourselves when you guys are alone, so there aren't any more lies, because that's really what's going on. So you guys said three meetings from now, everyone's going to be here for sure? Or is that like, it might not happen, like, someone might be out sick or something? And I'm sure it's possible, but are you guys sure that everyone will be here, three meetings from now?
Four meetings.
Four meetings? Indefinitely? You think?
Hmm.
Okay. My life, I do feel that my life is in danger, and my family's life is in danger, but they're such liars, like I said. And the police really, I've been down to the police station many times trying to give a complaint, and they just won't listen to me because they say that I need evidence. They won't even let me speak to someone and, like, make a complaint. So although I do feel that my life is in danger, and my family's life is in danger for these people who have been bothering me for two and a half years, or these two individuals who are gangsters, occultists, and masons, which I will never even be, yeah, it's just, I just, like I said, I'm having trouble trusting people. I feel that the entire council should be here, so you guys can't lie to Bob and Laura. So I'll be back four meetings from now. Thank you guys so much, and please, I suggest during these four weeks, this whole month, before you guys see me again, you guys really try to, like, see what the gangsters, masons, and occultists are doing in Glendale, like harassing people, like terribly, like terribly. Yeah, like morning, noon, and night. Like, they won't leave me alone. Okay, I'll be back in a month.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mirzakhanyan.
Hopefully, things will be better.
Thank you.
Later, you guys. Oh, and the girls in question, let me just say their names. I'm sure it's important. The girls who are bothering me, the first one to start this is Leah Candileary Noodle Yes, and the second one is, her name is Ghazarian. She lives in my building, and apparently she's friends with this girl named Leah Candileary Noodle Yes, and she's a mason, gangster, occultist like her, and has chosen to be in cahoots with her and bother me. So I think her name is Ani. Ani Ghazarian. Right, okay, so those two. All right, later.
Thank you. Good night. Thank you. Richard Lebov, followed by Nick Franklin.
Good evening, Mayor Sinanian, other esteemed council members and city staff. I am Richard Lebov, 35-year resident of our jeweled city of Glendale. I unfortunately missed the getting here earlier when you dealt with item 4F for the creation of the Neodara Historic District, which would be our seventh district, and I certainly am very much in favor of that happening. But since we've passed that item, I'm going to take advantage of the opportunity to be before you, because, as you may recall from seeing me several times in the last several months, there is still an issue that needs to be addressed that will relate to Neodara as it has related to the Brockmont Park Historic District. As you, I'm sure, have been informed, when the house at 1555 Valley View Drive went before the Historical Preservation Commission, they were denied the, by the commission, approval for demolition of that property. And as you may recall, when I came before you before, I think you, as I, was appalled that we could be creating a historic district and then immediately allowing for the possibility of demolition of a contributing property. And that scenario still exists, because our community development department and members of that department, to my knowledge, have still not addressed that issue. As you may recall, it seemed to me, and I reported to you at that time, that there was an attitude, and I will call it an attitude, that very possibly we could let 1555 Valley View slip through the system, but we'll correct it at some future date. Well, the future date is now here, and as you may also know, during that Historic Preservation Commission meeting where the demolition was denied, one of the commissioners suggested that we have a moratorium on the creation of new historic districts. I was on vacation, but I learned that she later retracted those remarks and, you know, doesn't feel that way. And I certainly would not feel that either, because I think we're all in agreement that we need as many historic districts as possible. But we also need to address- But we also need to address, and Ms. Friedman, who's not here this evening, she did question Mr. Henanian about this very issue. And I have to say that Mr. Henanian, in my belief, has not been addressing this issue. And from what I know, it has been ignored. You should also know that the owners of 1555 Valley View have in fact filed an appeal. They, you know, seem to want to go forward still with the possibility of demolishing their ranch-style house and creating a two-story Spanish Revival House. So this issue is not going away. And that is why, you know, once again, I'm before you this evening because I think that we do need to do something about this. And it is not something that should be simply ignored. And I do hope City Manager Ochoa and others will take this seriously. Because, you know, it was very clear in the Historic Preservation Commission meeting that there was a lot of animosities among neighbors and so forth. And, you know, some of this is to be expected in the creation of historic districts. But I think we should all move forward with the attitude that there are ways to resolve these situations. And I think that when the residents of 1555 Valley View come before you, when that is in fact scheduled, they will try to claim that members of the Community Development Department misled them and so forth. And, you know, you can hear their side of it. You can be assured that I will also be here to provide some input. But from the hearing, it was clear that there has been miscommunications from members of the Community Development Department. So again, I take this opportunity to bring this before you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lebov.
One moment. Sorry. Go ahead. Now go ahead.
Hi, everybody. My name's Nick Franklin, and I live at 113 North Cedar Street. And congratulations to Mr....
Thank you.
Najarian. I have a real concern because I frequent the IHOP restaurant, and there is, there was a crosswalk there, but it's faded out. And there's no curb cut. There's crosswalk, but no curb cut. And there's no sound device to let blind people know that it's okay to cross. So when you have an opportunity, could somebody please talk to Wayne and have him look into this to see if something could be done? That would be great. And also, now that Larry Zarian is no longer with us, there's black tape that's supposed to go down on the sidewalk so you don't roll off of there and get injured. That needs to be looked into because he said to me, that was always his job to take care of that. And it needs some attention. And also, there's no recognition that the tree that's there is in memory of him, like we made for Ginger. So if we could make something really nice for Larry, I know that he would smile from heaven and say, "They finally got it done." So that's... Oh, one more thing. There's no way to, as I told Artie in a discussion one day, there's no way for people with disabilities to get to the Rand Library. There's no transportation offered through beline routes for people to get there. So if you could look into that when you have them at it, that would be great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Franklin, thank you, Nick. Take notes on...
Yes, sir. We will circle back.
Yes.
I'd like to ask you, where is the tree for Larry Zarian exactly? Across the street from the...
It's just up on the hill next to where it has the, has the name for all the, for all the army, for the Army, the Navy.
Oh.
Right here.
Oh, down here. Oh, okay. Okay.
And there's no... There's just the trees there, but nobody knows why the tree is there. Only us that know. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Have a good evening. And that's the last speaker that we have tonight. What's next, Mr. Clerk?
If there's no new business, and I don't assume there is...
There is no new business.
Who we adjourn?
Second.
And we're adjourned at 8:00 p.m.